Call meeting to order for the Ashland Board of City Commissioners on Thursday, February 27th. If you all will stand and gentlemen, if you'll move your cover, we'll have the invocation by Commissioner Goot. And Mr. Wirth, would you do our pledge?
Let us pray. God, we ask and invite your Holy Spirit into our chambers today to preside over our meeting. Lord, you are faithful and we are thankful for your blessings and favor over our city. We ask for your wisdom and guidance over this Board of Mayor Commissioners as we strive to make the right decisions for our city and in the best interest of our citizens. Bless our city manager, our staff and employees and those that attend today. We pray always, in Jesus's name, amen.
Gentlemen, please uncover and to loo. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Goot and Mr. Wirth, appreciate that. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda presented.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussions, additions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we'll move to our mayor and commissioners comments and Mr. Renfro, we'll start with you today.
I have nothing, sir.
Okay, all right.
All right. Good morning. You may have to bear with me, I'm somewhat hoarse today. But first off, I want to pray for the families affected by the flooding in eastern Kentucky. And I know there were some in parts of Boyd County that were affected as well. I also want to thank the brave men from the Ashland Fire Department for sending their USAR team to eastern Kentucky. Thank you guys for doing that, for being there for our neighbors. I want to thank the city of Ashland, Boyd County Fiscal Court and the city of Catholicsburg for working together for a supply drive for families in eastern Kentucky. That supply drive is still going on. I want to thank Lorraine Woolery for manning that at the Ashland Fire Station. That drive is still going on until March 1st. Items can be received from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at the central fire station. Items such as cleaning supplies, hygiene items, baby items and dog and cat food. And then I also want to finish by saying my heart's and my heart and prayers are going to the family of the fatal fire recently in Boyd County. So it's all God.
Mr. Martin, Commissioner Goot.
I just want to welcome everybody to this noon meeting. And we had a very informative Capitol Projects meeting. And there's a lot going on in our city from parks to water and sewer and economic development. We have four new businesses, I learned, that are coming in the Town Center Mall, which is good news. And the next meeting, we're looking forward to our visit with Sarah Marks, who's the CEO of UK King's Daughters. Going to give us an update on the future of the hospital. I'd like to say, Mike Atkins, have a happy retirement, sir. You have been an all-star member of our city team. And I thank you for your service and your hard work. Tonight is a Boyd County Ashland District Championship at Blazer Gym. And our own Chris Pullum, you'll be calling the game, won't you? With my town, I'm not going to be biased today, but go Tomcats. That's all I have.
That's enough, all right, all right, very good. Just a couple of comments in addition to the other commissioners. We do have a food drive going on that we're helping United Way and the YMCA to partner with them. And we have collection points, not only in the city here, on each of the floors and the first floor, but all of the stations of the fire department and the police department. And if you can see to bring some of the extra food that you have, that'd be nice. And it goes up to March the 15th, I believe, for that. We did have a excellent water resource recovery facility. That's our new wastewater treatment plant name. We had the companies there did an excellent presentation. We went to visit at our treatment plant. And hopefully, we'll be going out to bid on that soon and find out where we actually will need to be. And I guess we're getting close to our network that will be on our own, correct, for computers?
We should be on our own probably by tomorrow.
Oh, that's very excellent. And we'll be saving a lot of money.
It's about a quarter of a million dollar savings, sir.
Yes, sir. So we're starting to bring a lot of things together, so it's looking good. And with that, I'll pass it to you.
I do have two things after all.
Go ahead.
Let me, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, welcome Barry Atkins back to staff. It's great to have you back, Barry. And this will be the final meeting for Mike Atkins. And he's been a tremendous asset to the community and we thank you for your service.
Great job.
I have no voice, sir.
Sure, okay. With that, we'll move to our public participation. If anybody would like to address the commission, you'd have five minutes to do that. And rather than, anybody like to address the commission? Okay, hearing none, we'll move into our old business. Mr. Wheeler?
Item A, second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Approving Change Order Number Two and Change Order Number Three Between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Mechanical Construction Company for the 26th Street Pump Station Rehabilitation Project, Increasing the Contract in the Amount of $19,749 for the Department of Engineering."
Some move.
First and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, item B.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Mending the Authorized Position Listing, The Salary Chart, Adopting the Job Description for Director of Engineering and Adopting the Revised, Updated and Corrected Job Descriptions for Various Departments Within the City of Ashland of the Classification and Compensation Plan as Adopted by Ordinance Number 31 Series of 2023, as Previously Amended Specifically by Ordinance Number 82 Series of 2023."
Some move.
Second.
First and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item C.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Approving Change Order Number One Between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Lights Enterprises, Inc. to Increase the Contract Amount by $1,600 for the Demolition of 2414 Beach Street for the Department of Community Economic Development to be paid from the general fund."
Some move.
Second.
First and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item D.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Amending Ordinance Number 151 Series of 2023 Previously Amended by Ordinance Number 6 Series of 2025, Wish Establish the Ashland Conference Center Advisory Committee for the City of Ashland, Kentucky."
Some moved.
Second.
First and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Our consent agenda.
A resolution of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, Adopting, Authorizing and Approving the Course of Action Presented by the City Manager on the Items Appearing on the Consent Agenda for the Regular Meeting of the Board of City Commissioners of February 27th, 2025.
Some move.
Second.
And a first and a second, any discussion?
Yes, sir. Number four, I had two phone calls thanking the city for removing that structure. And as Commissioner Reimer was talking about the fire department, if the chief would talk a little bit about number seven and the equipment we're about to receive.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, chief.
Mayor Commissioners, good afternoon. Item seven is for a USAR trailer. Basically, this is going to be a 20-foot trailer with equipment that we will be able to use for our collapse rescue response. This will also not only be for our department, but this entire area. This was a grant through the Kentucky Homeland Security. And the $280,000, as you can see in the physical note, around 6,700 is what the city's responsibility was for that. So a very, very good asset for our area to have that we were able to get through that grant, so.
Thank you. That's the reason I wanted you to, because in this area, you all get calls to come to eastern Kentucky. And when you roll up, those people in eastern Kentucky see you Ashland on the side of a piece of equipment. They're relieved. And I'm just so glad we can do this, thank you so much.
Yes, sir. With us being involved with the USAR initiative with the state, with Kentucky Task Force One, it has enabled us to gather equipment, get training and be able to respond to incidents just like the flooding a couple of weeks ago. And it really, it puts a lot of assets on the ground for this side of the state that normally we would have to wait for larger cities to send to us, so.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Any others? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Move on to new business, item A.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Approving Change Order Number Four Between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Mechanical Construction Company for the 26th Street Pump Station Rehabilitation Project, Increasing the Contract in the Amount of $3,784 for the Department of Engineering."
Some move.
Second.
First and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item B.
An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Contract Between the City of Ashland and JMK Electric Company, Inc. to Furnish All Labor, Material, Supervision and Safety to Install a Backup Generator in the Amount of $76,300 for the Ashland Police Department.
Some move.
Second.
First and a second, any discussion? I'm just surprised we haven't had this in the past.
Well, the building was designed to have one.
Yeah.
It's one of the things that were cut out.
Oh, okay. We're fixing it now, chief. All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item C.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Approving Minority Loan Number 2025-M-001 to M&amp;J's Rolling Cafe, LLC in the Amount of $50,000 to be Paid from the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Funds, and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute All Loan Documents."
Some move.
Second.
First and a second, discussion?
Best breakfast burrito in town.
I'd agree with you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item D.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Request Fiscal Year 2026 Appropriations, Community Funding Through Congressman Hal Rogers's Office in the Amount of $10 million for the City of Ashland Conference Center Project, Authorizing Acceptance of Said Funding if Awarded and Authorizing or Directing the Mayor to Execute on behalf of the City of Ashland any and all documents and/or agreements associated with the appropriation request and acceptance."
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Can you elaborate on that, Mr. Wheeler?
This is just a grant application.
Just a grant application. This is something that the mayor has been working hard to seek additional funding on this project. And I believe he's found a possibility here. And this is what we need to do to apply for the fund. This is just authorizing us to apply for that funding.
And accept.
And accepting it if awarded.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the item E.
The staff request that we pass over that one. I believe that was probably taking care of itself or is an erroneous inclusion at this point.
Oh, okay.
So item F, mayor requests the board's concurrence on the reappointment of Jim Maggard to the Public Arts Council for a three-year term expiring March 12th, 2028.
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item G.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute and Submit an Application to the Kiowa Interstate Planning Commission for $750,000 in additional funds for the Winchester Avenue Streetscape Project with a 20% match to be paid by the City of Ashland."
Some move.
Second.
First and a second, any discussion?
Somebody explain this.
The best way I could explain it, I think there was some approvals done to this project that was not brought before the BOC. So, and I think it's about 500,000,000 plus and changes. This will allow us to apply for funding.
Oh, okay.
So this is over cost expenditures based on the original contract? And we're trying to come up with funding to pay the bill? Is that what we're trying to do?
That is correct, yes.
In plain language?
Yes, sir.
So somebody, somebody that didn't have authority approved, potentially approved up to an additional $500,000 worth of changes?
Yes, sir.
Without Board of Commission approval?
That is correct.
But we got to pay them.
Well, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Money that's been spent, the actions been taken, we got to pay for them.
Yep. Any other discussion?
No more surprises, we don't think.
Is there any, are there any more unauthorized expenditures out there? I would say that we're aware of.
Not to my knowledge, at this time.
That's a good qualification.
You're ahead this time, okay.
I want to thank Ms. Beach for catching this.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, you all have done some phenomenal work and we still got a lot more to do.
We do.
We're getting there.
We want to thank Mr. Wheeler for the work that he's been doing to try to get this project completed. And he's put in a considerable amount of effort with the contractor and with the engineering group that are supposed to be supervising.
Appreciate that. Well, we're going to keep working with it. We've seen some progress this week with AEP. And they're, they've been very cooperative, so.
Excellent.
Well, we want to thank Kentucky Power for reacting to your inquiries.
Sure, excellent. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item H.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Bill of Sale Between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and Kentucky Power Company for the Purchase of the Streetlight Poles Located on Winchester Avenue in the 700, 800, 900, 1,1100 and 1,200 blocks."
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Total cost is a dollar.
What's that?
Total cost is $1.
Yeah, I'd like more of those. All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into an executive session to discuss property acquisition and possible litigation.
Some move.
Second.
First and second, all right. Favor say aye?
Can I make a comment on something? And it doesn't have to do with this ordinance, so it could be, or this, I mean, it could be...
Why don't you go ahead and vote on the executive session real quick and then you can make your comment.
First and a second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
So it's, you know, last agenda, I think we hired, we voted to hire a engineer for some services. I think we need to look at hiring local engineers when we can. Because I know there are extremely qualified local engineers in our area. Catholicsburg, Ashland, Greenup County, Lawrence County, Ohio, Huntington, local. You know, instead of hiring out of Cincinnati or Louisville or other these, you know, places further away. I think we need to focus, if we can, focus on hiring local to put money back in our community, so.
Well, I think that's, I mean, that's been a directive that Mr. Grubb has had. And I think we'll continue to do that, especially now.
Obviously, there's some areas of work that require...
Certain more expertise.
The folks that we saw earlier this week.
Certain.
They're doing the work at wastewater treatment plant. But I endorse what you're saying.
Yeah.
Mayor, I'd like to, after we come out of executive session, I'd like to close the meeting in memory of your friend Randy Memmer.
Yeah, in fact, that's what I was going to do.
Okay.
Randy was my first cousin and passed away yesterday morning.
Is it unexpected?
No, it's expected, a cancer. But he's been a great advocate for Ashland and business owner and...
Certainly has been.
He's done well for, to really come out for our city. All right, let's, we're motion approved.
We're back in session from our executive session and no action was taken and we'll move on.
There was no other items discussed either?
Correct. And on item G, I think there were some questions of the extra $750,000 on our project for downtown. And Mr. Grubb provided a list for us that what these extra costs were that were not approved by the board. And just to mention a few to give you an idea, the brick pavers fixed at the church of 17th and Corners and the roundabouts where trucks were damaged or damaged. The concrete entrance ways added to 15th Street South corridor. Extra handicap ADA ramp added to the 17th. Entrances added to curb sidewalk and decorative plates of 18th and Henry Clay. Entrances of the 18th Henry Clay redone to enlarge entrance after plans approved and work completed. Entrance way to church of 17th Street side widened for trash truck rework of curb island pavers and drive concrete. Surveying for changes. Drive entrance changed by the alleyway to 16th and Paul Castle after sidewalk and curb completed per Steve Cole. Extra concrete and roadway excavation of Tramout parking lot. Message boards rented to delay for the delay of the completing lighting. Extra entrance way for enterprise rental. Extra concrete from sidewalk to building on several locations from 19th and to 22nd Street. It was planned to be grass. Wider entrance at CAD. The complete drive entrance changed from sidewalk to 11th for car dealership. So that's why we're paying 750 extra thousand dollars for the project over. That's what we know of, but I thought everyone should know that.
Changes in the scope of the work that did not have approval of the board.
Correct, correct. But wow, but that explains item G for everybody. All right, do we have any other business needs to come before the board? I do want to reiterate that we're going to recess this meeting until Tuesday at 11:30 in memory of Randy Memmer. We stand recessed.